Welcome to the four o'clock work session for Lynch City Council. We'll go to the city manager. I do believe we'll have a bit of an adjustment with our agenda. If you will walk us through that.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the city council. I've been made aware of something that we need to talk about in closed session. I've spoken to our city attorney. He has the exception under which that we can go in closed. With your permission and recommendation, I'd ask the city attorney to read that exception and that we would go immediately into closed.
So the language would be consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the protection of the privacy of individuals and public safety of individuals and personal matters not related to public business. It's under section 2.2-3711A4, and it's specific to a law enforcement concern brought to the city manager's attention.
Council officer, it's by motion. It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
Madam Clerk, do you want me to just call it?
Yeah, consensus or all those in favor say aye.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We're now in closed.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion on the certification?
Oh, so move. Second.
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Okay, well, welcome to the August 13th, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to welcome us to the agenda overview.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Today before you, we have a couple of business item briefings. What are those? Those are those opportunities where we first engage you on something that will come to ultimately at a later meeting for a vote. So we want you to have your opportunity to ask questions, hear about the topic itself, and not put you in a position the same evening to vote on it. So a business item briefing, there are four. I want to acknowledge, unfortunately, Officer Ball, who does great, great work for us in our city. He is a subject matter expert in talking about the reduction of deer population. He is under the weather. We wish him the best, he and his family. And we will have him slotted and scheduled at your next meeting, which is September 10th. You see there that there's at least one roll call item and then also a closed session. With that, Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our business item briefings. Okay. We have a proposed polling place change. Ward 3, Precinct 4, Mr. Dan Pence.
Hello, Mr. Pence. How are you?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay, here we go. So we had a polling place for Precinct 304, which was in Compassion Church, First Church of the Nazarene, known as Compassion Church of the Nazarene. They decided at the last election that that would be their last election as serving as a polling place. So we've been put in a position of getting another polling place. We discussed it among the board and myself. And we felt that we would probably like to move more towards some public buildings opposed to some privately owned buildings, just for some of the reasons that some of the volatility we've had over the past few years has been with some of the privately owned polling places. And so we reached out to the folks over at Heritage High School. They ran it by their administration before they agreed that they said they would be willing to serve as a polling place. And so we have put on your agenda the proposal to make use of Heritage High School for the fourth precinct of the third ward, starting with the November 5th, 2024 general election, and continuing using them as a polling place for the future. And so with that agreement, we're proposing that you go ahead and formalize that in the process here and agree that we would move the polling place from Compassion Church over to Heritage High School. There is a map which shows you the distance between the existing polling place and the new polling place. That map shows that it's about .7 miles. It is on the same street, on Worth's Ferry Road. The parking at Heritage High School around the back, which we would use, is probably more than adequate to what was needed there. It's certainly the size of what was at Compassion Church and better. Also, we have better visibility for curbside voters who might pull up and pull up to where we would have them park for curbside voting. And the internal, of course, you know, that's the cafeteria where we'd be going, and that's quite spacious and adequate for us to serve as a polling place. So with that, I open for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Comments? No? Okay. Oh, hold on. Vice Mayor Frawley.
Thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions on timeline. I just want to make sure we're good.
Yep.
So it's my understanding there is a bit of a concern related to, and I don't remember at all from our conversation preparing for the meeting, but if memory serves, there is a concern related to the timeline in that when this, and I'm not necessarily faulting when it's gotten to us or how, just where we are.
Yep.
Explain to me how we're going to make sure this is all done with the Attorney General's approval with enough notice for the voters in November. Early voting is September 20th.
Correct.
And because of many interesting circumstances here, I'm well aware of when ballots need to start printing this year. So if you could walk us through some of that.
Sure, absolutely. So just some timeline items. As you mentioned, we have ballot proofing taking place on September 6th. That's actually supposed to take place over the weekend. So folks from the Department of Elections told us they'll be working through the weekend as they get information back. We get it from the vendor, the proposed ballot PDF, and then we send it to them. But by the 9th, we're supposed to be getting ballot orders out in flight. So, and we have to go back to Department of Elections and tell them that we've done all this, et cetera. By the 20th, like you mentioned, that's the beginning of early voting. That's absentee ballots go out in the mail at that point. And of course, our location is open from the 20th for the 45 days all the way down to the weekend before the election. Now, that does not impact any other polling place, right? So that is just impacting our office. So this particular item really doesn't have to do with either absentee voting or with early voting. However, to your point, there is a 60-day window. The Department of Elections wants us to request a polling place change 60 days or better before we make, before they approve that change. However, they understand, like you all understand, that circumstances sometimes arise where you can't get outside that 60-day window. So they have an emergency polling place change as well. They have two different forms. I've reached out to the Department of Elections, kind of told them our situation. They said, actually, because you're planning to use this polling place as a permanent polling place, we recommend you kind of simultaneously file both of those requests. And in the event that the Attorney General's approval doesn't come through before that time, then you'll have the emergency in place, and that will suffice for your polling place change. So based on that advice, I'm confident that they understand our situation and we're going to get the approval, either of the permanent, if for some reason all that comes together, or more likely, the emergency change for this election.
So as I understand it, it's 60 days or better.
Right.
So there's a bit of leeway there for us.
Right.
Okay.
But I mean, we're going to make this decision, I think, on September 10th, I think, is what's on the thing.
Right, because 60 days would be right about September 5th.
Right. So that puts us actually inside the 60-day window. However, with your approval on this, I will actually go ahead and file the requests, and then we'll work through the process from there. So, and so I'll have both requests in flight, and they'll be able to approve whichever one that we need as appropriate at the time.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so what we do is, sorry, that's the final part of the question. The law used to be you had a 15-day window to notify voters. That law changed this past legislative session, so now you need to notify it by 30 days. So what I have on my calendar, that this is the deadline for this to go out. What we've done in the past is we've used the same vendor that the city uses for billing, the BMS, that will send out all the notices. And we've worked with them in the previous polling place changes to actually, I'll get actually literally the literal PDF of all of the notices I have to send from the Department of Elections, because they kind of reserve to themselves the right to execute that and print that. But once I have that in hand, I will basically turn it over to BMS and work with them to get that distributed, by the deadline or before.
Do we have money in our budget for the cost, again, your budget for the cost of that?
The cost of that, I think what the last one was, it was between like $1,000 and $2,000. So yeah, that will fall into our budget. And of course, if we get to the point in the year where we discover that we're running short or tight because of that, or, I mean, you also have to pay for the public notice in the paper, that's another, that's about a $500 and change cost. So if we turn, you know, turn out that we have struggles with the budget, which I don't anticipate, but if we do, then we'll be putting forth a budget amendment request later in the year.
Thank you.
Who else?
Well, my question had to do, I had the exact same question.
Well, thank you so much for your hard work. I know this is a stressful time for you, so we appreciate it. There's a lot going on, but we're behind you, we support you, and thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Beacon Credit Union Headquarters rezoning I-2 Light Industrial District to B-5, General Business District 5114 and 5208 Woodall Road. This item will appear before council for action on September 10th, 2024. Ms. Rachel Freshisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The subject property proposed to be rezoned consists of 4 and 300 acres located at 5114 and 5208 Woodall Road. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow the construction of a 40,000-square-foot, four-story office building and associated parking to be used as the corporate headquarters for Beacon Credit Union. The property is recommended for employment-to uses on our city's future land use map. Employment-to areas are intended to include light and heavy manufacturing, research and development, flex space, and large-scale office uses. Restaurant, hotel, and business uses may also be appropriate if they're scaled and designed to serve the immediate area. During Planning Commission's meeting on July 24th, the commission noted that the large-scale office use would be compatible with the employment-to designation and fits into the surrounding area, but there is currently no assurance that the property will be developed as proposed and that the B-5 zoning may allow uses that would not be as appropriate. Ultimately, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the petition. The petitioner and the property owner are currently in discussions about whether to submit voluntary proffers regarding that concern about potentially incompatible uses that would be permitted by the B-5 district. This item will return for a city council public hearing on September 10th. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Thank you for the presentation. Out of curiosity, did we, so I heard the developer's looking to do maybe some minor adjustments. Will, words?
Proffers?
Will the developer have the amount of time necessary to submit that before the public hearing? That's what I was trying to say.
So I checked in with them yesterday, and they are actively discussing it. So it sounds like they do intend to submit that soon. But yes, we'll give them the deadline for getting it into your council packet, for sure.
Well, it's more, thank you for our information, but I'm more trying to be mindful of what we're submitting to the public ahead of time. That may, I would hate for us to have to extend the public hearing. For some reason, they're not ready, but that doesn't seem to be an issue. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much. We now have the street vacation portion of, okay, correct, we had to say it. Is it Woz Landing or Ways Landing?
I think it's Woz.
Okay, great. Good. Woz Landing Drive. This item will appear before council for action on September 10th, 2024. Ms. Eva Reddell.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor and members of council, Elmwood Holdings is petitioning to vacate a portion of Woz Landing Drive located adjacent to 101 Dora Road and 123 Goodyear Drive. Another phase of development, including an extension of the right-of-way, was previously proposed for this area, but the developer is no longer pursuing that. The street vacation is proposed to allow the sale of the undeveloped property and to remove the unimproved portion of right-of-way from city maintenance. The area to be vacated is currently behind a gate and has not been improved for public use. The vacation would not impact vehicle or pedestrian access. This item will appear for city council vote on the September 10th public hearing agenda.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. Is this going to be used for anything else?
Not currently. It's not improved.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder?
Just, I want to commend the school system and 131 Voice and Mr. Cam and all the partners that came up to the back-to-school event on Saturday. And they gave out school supplies, gave out shoes, had all the, all the principals were there, talked to kids preparing them for school year. So we really appreciate that. I just love to see our community to work together. It just shows how strong we are when we pull resources together and support one another. They had a basketball tournament as well, and the gymnasium. So I just commend them for that event every year, even better than last year. We are doing a mentor school again because kids are back to school. So we need calling all men to help us welcome kids back to school. And it's going to be on Tuesday, the 20th. So we are so happy that kids are going back to school. Really, really happy. My budget is happy. So we're going to, they got free lunch and free breakfast at our school, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilwoman Dolan?
I don't have anything, but I just wonder if we should mention to the public that the deer population reduction presentation will be September 10th? Because I can tell you, I receive phone calls and emails. Everybody's going, yay, you're going to be talking about this and doing something about it. So I just want people to know, we haven't gotten rid of it. It's coming back. Stay tuned.
I didn't offer any remarks ahead of it. That is, in fact, the case will be September 10th.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yes. House of Kellen?
Yes, who's going to lead the bear?
Who's going to get the bear?
Oh, the bear.
Bear roaming around up on, not Campbell, it's over there on, what is that? Up by Pico.
Yes, it's in Lynchburg.
I heard about the lions and tigers, but not the bear.
His name's Charles.
Yeah, he's over by.
He's big.
Okay. We'll start with the deer and we'll go.
Bear may be tougher.
Anything else? No? Vice Mayor Frawley?
Ahead of the 10th, I have actually received additional, surprisingly, amount of correspondence on this topic, the deer issue. Ahead of it, just so we're all on the same page, one of the comments I've heard from a good friend of mine who is a deer hunter, if we're talking about the stand heights, most decks are eight foot, not 10. And so if we're talking about reductions there, most decks would be in that category, and so it would actually include more folks in that part of the ordinance. If I remember, that lowering a deck height, I think, was a part of that. So that's just a note for ahead of time. In conjunction with that, both y'all know, I've been talking to you a lot about coyotes. If there's a way we can integrate that in, I've continued to receive concerns about coyotes as well. Don't, unless you have something, don't necessarily need feedback, but I wanted to give you a bit of a teaser of what I'll be coming with at the next meeting. To my colleagues, there has been something put on the agenda for roll call. This has been something that I have been engaged with for a number of months. The idea's been started, stopped, started, stopped, but it's continued to develop, and it is called a Committee on Lifelong Learning. And the proposal, there is a memo that, if it's okay to share, I will. The memo is outlining the general purpose of the committee. It also outlines the business of the committee, its advisory role. It is not an executionary or administrative. It's advisory. And if there's anything that we heard, in my opinion, from the school board appointments in the last, this past couple of months ago, about some of the major challenges that we're seeing in the school system is a lack of trust or communication, both with council slash city hall, school administration, school board. That's the triangle. And then, of course, parents are kind of the ping pong ball, all in between, not to mention the students, parents, and staff, and so forth. So the idea was to come up with something a little bit more official. As Ms. Dolan is certainly aware, traditionally, there was a monthly mayor, vice mayor, chair, school board chair and vice chair joint pow-wow about these are some of the things going on. And essentially, this was born to expound upon that and offer it to the public to show a more productive, consistent dialogue between council and the school board. The memo I would be sharing does outline what the proposed membership would look like. Of course, it could be anything that the seven of us would think is sufficient to achieve this end of further and better communication between the two bodies. But the general concept would be three members of council, three members from the school board, ex-officio members as the mayor and chair of those two bodies. And again, the overarching goal would be to explore policy matters that concern both governing bodies, provide a collaborative view of analysts and recommendations that support high-quality public education for all residents in the city of Lynchburg. The rest below that, which you'll see in the memo, is to be determined. Of course, these are recommendations as a starting point, but it would be my hope that as we review it at our next meeting, you're first aware that this is the idea. Secondly, this is the concept and what our intent is. And then, of course, any changes or recommendations you would bring to the table, please share them. The school board leadership is aware that this was coming, so this shouldn't be a surprise. And it is at least, regardless of what happens later this year, it is scheduled to roll in and, if it passes, to start out with the new council, new city leadership, as far as mayor and vice mayor, and commence it then. So that's kind of the timeline we're looking at over the next few months. If you have any questions, of course, you can contact me or ask now, but I'll share this memo with you after the meeting. And we should be reviewing this at our next meeting in September.
Great. Is that all I have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so last week was a busy and exciting week. I got to go to the LCS convocation. I think it was Wednesday morning. That was super fun, getting to see all the staff and teachers, all, everybody that works for LCS admins. And I had a good time. Did you have a good time, Dr. Wilder?
Wonderful.
It was a great time. And I know the vice mayor was there, and we had some of our school members there. That was fun. It was a pep rally style in the gym, and there was great energy. And so thank you again to all of our staff at LCS. And I know you're getting ready for a new year, and we're thrilled for you. And thank you for all your hard work and what you pour into our kiddos. And we're just excited about what's going to happen this year. So again, just, we're excited for all the kids and getting back into the schools, and we're just so appreciative of all the hands that are prepared what's to come, because I know it's a lot of work. You work all summer long to get ready for the school year. So, and then later that afternoon, I got to participate in the funeral for Sergeant Mayburn Hudson, who was the World War II veteran that we brought back home to Lynchburg after 80 years, 80 years to the day of his death overseas in World War II. He was killed on August 7th, 80 years ago, and was originally declared missing in action and then killed in action. And it took until last year for them to identify his remains after he was exhumed. And he was a Lynchburg boy, and was a boy, because he was 17 when he enlisted and 20 years old when he died. So his family pretty much all predeceased him. He'd only been married for a short time to his high school sweetheart when he went over to serve and then passed away. So he was buried here at the cemetery over at Fort Hill. And I got to attend his ceremony and gave a proclamation on behalf of the city. And we had a ton of veterans there and some reservists. And then our fire department was there giving him full honors. It was really beautiful. And I got to meet his niece and his sister, who's still living, and some other family members. So it was really a beautiful way to honor one of our own and, more importantly, someone who truly died giving all for our country. So that was a great day to be able to honor someone who really deserved it. Another thing I did, I guess, the week before last, is I went up to Richmond and met with Secretary Agudera, the Secretary of Education for the state. And I'll say it this way, I begged her. I begged her for money for our schools, y'all, because, you know, we've said that we will go to bat for our citizens any way that we can to help get additional resources. And so I did. I followed through on that promise and went and met with her and one of her counterparts with the Department of Education for the state. And, you know, we have made, you have seen, we have made historic investments in our public safety departments, you know, public safety departments. And we've done other things in investing in our city. And it's time that we, you know, raise the bar with our schools, and we need help. So I went up to the state, had a wonderful meeting with her, and asked pretty aggressively for some support. And we're going to keep asking. We kind of exhausted all measures, but I planted the seed, and I'm going to go back, and we're going to keep asking. But it was a really great meeting, and I think we established some good contact up there in Richmond, and we'll continue to advocate through our representatives. And so, thought that was good, and I'm just, I'm excited about working with our colleagues up here to get into advocate for what our schools need. And I think that together, we will make sure that they thrive in serving our students and our teachers, making sure that they know that they are worth the investment. So with that said, we will now go into closed session. Consideration of a closed session to review and/or evaluate the performance of the city's clerk of council, city attorney, and city manager pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go in closed meeting?
Second.
All right. Can we vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay.